Electronic devices and stand for the invocation by Council President Beely.
Thank you, Council President. Please fill us our Lord's Prayer followed by the, by the Fledge. Our Father.
Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our day of honor. Forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us into temptation, but the Lord is our salvation.
The Fledge? Fledge legions?
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So today we have a special conference meeting that we will, this is what we started. We're going to do this first and then some items will get moved over to the business meeting if we decide to. The first one on the list is the Stop DWI Grant Award.
And, and we, by the way, we appreciate Mr. Cross of being here with us while our police chief is out with some family matters, so wanted to thank and acknowledge him. The Stop DWI Grant is one that's come up periodically and this particular year's award, obviously, we want to try to start it with the, the Halloween holiday. So I talked, we talked with the council president. He said, yeah, let's go ahead and try and run this and see if we can get this grant moving. Even now doing it, they only have a week or two to finish up their paperwork, so that's why we're bringing that forward to you today. It's a pretty straight, it's a pretty straightforward award, no unusual changes or anything like that with it. It's, it's, it's pretty, it's actually, we're looking at a sub grant amount of $7,289 out of a total grant award amount, I believe, of $19,700. The county's getting, I think, about $10,000. We're getting about $7,200, $7,300 of it. And we looked at it, it looks good to us and we recommend approval.
So basically, this is making an amendment to the budget to allow accepting of the grant fund and then transferring that money to the police budget, correct?
Yes.
So that they can now use that to spend it appropriately. So any questions or concerns on that? Okay, so are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting?
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward. Next item on the agenda is the license agreement with Jason Robert Farley.
And we've been working with a man over in Public Works on this and basically what's going on with this particular issue is that Mr. Farley has a lot that actually its, its number is basically, looks like it's parcel number and it's, it's not right up against our property. There's a piece of property that's right in between that a Mr. Mark Hackett owns. Mr. Farley has, is landlocked and is unable to get pedestrian or ATV or any of that kind of access onto the property. In, in your package, you should have a copy of the map in front of you. Our property is right on Law Street, right there, and then just immediately, I call it immediately south, not quite due south, but immediately south is Mr. Hackett and Mr. Farley has obtained approval there. And now he's coming to us asking if he can gain approval. And what we have talked about with him and what he has said he would agree to do is, is to go ahead and have an ability to either walk across, there's an existing two-track road, if you look, if you look real hard on the map, it's hard to see because we kind of drew through it with a black line, but there's a, I call it a two tracker or a foot path, Jeep trail, whatever you want to call it. And the condition that we would like to put on a recommendation for approval is that he be able to use foot traffic, his ATV, if he wants to run a small tractor, you know, to go in there and disc up some of the, some of the open area, but no, but no use of light vehicles that are licensed for, for driving on the roads. In other words, it's, it's limited to, you know, his personal, he said that would, he expressed to us that would be fine with him. We didn't seem to have a problem with it. We didn't, we felt it was better to come to you with an application for access license as opposed to some type of an easement. In other words, it's revocable if something happens and it's not in the best interest of the city, then we have the ability to be able to pull back on it. So we're not giving away a strip of our real estate, in other words.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or concerns? The reason we wanted, oh, I'm sorry, Bob?
Yeah. How did we end up with these cut up lots?
It's only one lot.
Right. How did we end up though without having access to the lot?
We have access, he doesn't have access.
Right. How did that happen?
I don't know. I asked the same question.
Previously had access on the railroad right of way, which is sold off. From time to time, this will happen where a piece of property is sold off and it cuts off the parcel owner's right to access the property and then basically look for a license or an easement to access that back piece of property.
Right.
Which is what's at the point here.
So he, he's already has a license agreement or agreed with the Hackett.
Right.
Family to be able to get to that part of it, but he needs our part because it's actually two parcels of property he needs to cross.
Right.
The reason I agreed to move this to the special conference was hunting season and he wants to be able to get back there. Otherwise, by the time we went through our normal process, we would be delaying and I didn't feel that was fair. So that's why, just so you know, that's why I moved it up. And it's not normal we would do that, but under the circumstances, we're trying to help him out. Okay? So any other questions or concerns? Okay, so are we in consensus to move this to tonight's conference? Or tonight's business, I mean. Yes, okay, good. Thank you. That moves forward. Appoint members to various cities committees or boards?
Yep. I can go ahead and handle it unless Heidi's dying to handle it, but, but she said, she said feel free, so. We have a couple of individuals that have volunteered and put in application. As I understand it, they've gone through and been reference checked by our council members who are assigned to do that. Richard Beatty, who I believe live, in fact, I know, lives over on Summit Street, was looking to go into the community garden committee and we are short on that committee, particularly now because we, we looked at the need for residency and we did, by the way, we did confirm residency for, for this person and the one on the other committee. And the second one is Historic Preservation Commission. Currently, they only have enough people filling slots to have a quorum if every single person shows up, so they are actually anxiously awaiting the outcome of this with an opportunity for someone else to be able to serve. And I understand there may be some other people in the community here in the near future coming up and may be willing to serve and that's a good thing. So these two look really good. They've been vetted, don't see any problems with them and we'd recommend you move them forward, so.
Okay. Any questions or concerns about that? So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting?
Yes.
Okay, that moves as well.
That's it.
Motion to adjourn the conference meeting. Mr. Beely, seconded by Ms. Briggs. Please call the roll.
Council President Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jane Kowski? Yes. Okay, now call to order the regular business meeting. You've all received your July and August financials, so is there any questions or concerns referenced to those? So we're all in consensus to approve those?
Yes.
Okay. You've also received the September 2019 minutes. Were there any omissions or additions you felt needed to be adjusted there? Okay, none? Are we in consensus to approve those?
Yes.
Okay, that happens. We have a communication, I see?
Yes. Batavia's Original and Coanis Club of Batavia are looking to host their annual Halloween parade for kids on Sunday, October 27th. This is at 1:00 PM. It starts over at Dan's Tire and ends at Batavia's Original.
Okay, you've seen the application. Does anyone have any questions or reference to that? Okay. So the next city council conference meeting will be held Monday, October 28, 2019, 7:00 PM. City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, city center. We have a few agenda items that we discussed at the last conference meeting there and plus what we did today. So we'll start, get those, uh, let's see. 111, 2019, the resolution transferring funds from assigned fund balance to various reserves. Mr. McGinnis? 112, 2019, resolution, fire department budget to reflect the receipt of a FEMA assistance to firefighters grant in the amount of $4,700. Mr. Beely? 113, 2019, resolution to amend the fire department budget to reflect a car seat grant. 114, 2019, authorizing changes to the city's streetlight account. Ms. Pacino? 115, 2019, authorizing city council president for the Time Warner easement. Ms. Briggs? 116, 2019, amend 2019 Department Budget of Public Works budget to reflect the $100,000 for the Genesee County Maintenance Agreement and Batavia Operation Agreement. Mr. Byakowski? 117, 2019, the 190 entitled zoning ordinance for the I-1 and I-2 for the, I believe it's for the storage facilities. Mr. Canaly? 118, 2019, authorizing council president to sign a lease agreement with Batavia Players. Mr. McGinnis? 119, 2019, the Police Department for the DWI Grant that we talked about earlier. Ms. Briggs? 120, 2019, the easement for the, Mr. Farley? Mr. Canaly? And 121, 2019, the committee and board assignment. Ms. Pacino? City Attorney?
Yes. Council President, Council, since we've last reported, we continue to work on a variety of matters. By general category, they are code enforcement, general contract matters, real estate matters, general missable matters of a variety of sorts, as well as real property matters and on occasion, a litigation question or so. But there's nothing specific to report on at this time.
Any questions? City Manager?
I just received word today finally that, that the incentive proposal, which is basically the grant agreement between Empire State Development and us for the, a million dollar DRI grant for the mall, has gone up for signature to the New York City office for Empire State Development. So they said that hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll be getting that back and also letting you know that the RFPs went out and I know that there was at least one or two responses to the RFPs for the mall feasibility study. And the other thing that, just let you know that from Public Works is we either have or are going to shortly have notices to proceed on the mall roof repair and I believe there was over there on the Redfield.
You know, it's been a long day.
Yeah. So, so now it's just a matter of when they're going to schedule which parts of construction, whether they can get something done this fall or they're going to have to wait till spring. They're working that out right now, so. Wanted to let you know that we've got those and hopefully we're going to see some things moving forward.
Um, I also, I also remember, I, I think about a week or two ago, I signed the Redfield Park.
Yes.
Parkway.
The contract.
Contract, so that's been signed, so that's in that process.
Right.
I, I should have put that in the email I sent you. I forgot about that, but it just reminded me of it, so.
Right. And, and we, right. And other than that, we're moving along with normal business. We have just, Lisa Neary and I just today went over the six month of budget review and I'm sure we'll be getting back to you, but I'm pleased to say that it looks like most, if not all, the departments seem to be tracking where they need to be on, on their budgets, so.
Good. And your financials will reflect some of that stuff too, so. Anything else? Any questions? Committee reports? Ms. Pacino?
Very quick report from Bid. The scarecrows are all up and down. There are 17 of them.
They look so nice.
Aren't they adorable? They're wonderful. A lot of people participate in it and there's a contest. You can actually vote for your favorite. And the next thing coming up is Christmas in the City, which will be December 7th and includes a parade.
Same time already?
Yes, it is.
Wow.
It doesn't seem like it was just summer, like a week ago. Any other reports? Public comments? All speakers should have signed up in advance. Each speaker will please use the podium. Please state your name and address before beginning your statement. You'll be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair, that would be me. Council will not engage in debate with the speaker. On your first bell, that means you have 30 seconds left. Please wrap it up because I'll have to stop you on your second bell, which means that your time is up.
Good evening. Russell Nefiu, 323 State Street, right across from Batavia High School. I'm here to talk about the deer problem that we've had for about 10 years. I spoke with the manager back in July and Councilman Canaly also, but I like to bring everybody up to speed on that. What I explained and what's been happening, I've lost a lot of money on landscaping over 10 years. There's been a problem, of course, the droppings on, on the ground. I've got a dog, you know, you've got to worry about ticks. Those things are disheartening, but I've put up with them. But now I got chased off to my backyard by a deer. I was faced or reared up and I got away from it luckily. A couple of days later, my 70-year-old neighbor of mine, she got ran into her apartment from the, the parking lot. Now there's, could be anywhere from six to 10 deer that run through there all the time. They come down the road, they go in the front of the school. Now it's becoming a real problem when you can't go into your own backyard. I've hunted all my life. I've owned guns all my life, so I've been around it, but I've never met deer like this. And it's, now it's becoming dangerous. I know a few years back, they had a committee and I don't know what happened to it. I don't know where it went. I know that something needs to be done. And as I called up, I even explained, I said, I'm not just complaining and this is going to throw it in your lap. This is not an easy solution. I says, if you need my help, I'd be more than willing to. So I guess I'm here tonight to find out if there's been any thing done at all. It's been a few months, you know, of where we stand and maybe what, what we're going to do, if it's been discussed even. I know you've been busy, but it definitely needs something to be done in this situation, something. I can't, just the other night, again, I walked out in my backyard and I went up to a deer within 20 foot and it wouldn't back down. When they start to stomp, they're going to hold their ground and the next thing they're going to do, they're going to raise up and they're going to come after you. So it's not a good thing and plus you've got kids across the school. So, you know, I, I, you hear me, you know? And, and, and this isn't, you're new. You didn't have anything to do with that committee or anything like that and you've just got three months when we talked, you know? So that's all. I'd just like to find out where we stand and, and take it from there.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Deborah Kerr Rosenbeck. I live at 13 Lewis Avenue in Batavia and I'm here to speak to you tonight about the grants that are given out of the revolving loan fund. I've spoken to you a couple of times about this before. You approved two grants at your September 9 business meeting and I was dismayed a bit by that because I'm wondering if you are aware of the scoring process for those grants and if you paid attention to that and looked at that and if you would, out of your funding, your personal pocket, if a grant scored a 60, if you would fund it, if it was based on 100. And that was approved that night. I was trying to remember what the vote was and I couldn't look at the minutes, but I think it was either 8-0 or 7-1. So everybody pretty much voted yes on a grant that got a score of 60 and I'm dismayed by that. Thank you.
John Roach, 116 Grandview Terrace. Sort of more of a question. We all know that people are bitching about bad landlords, bad renters, all sorts of horror stories, but landlords can, through a city process, get background checks on potential renters, but there's no real way for a renter to check out a landlord. It's, it's common. We, we all know that we have some really bad ones. Is there any way that the city could publish a list of, say, landlords that have properties that have had, say, five police visits within like a 90-day period? You know, if you, if you own property and the cops are always there, let's, let's put it out there in public so people know who the owner of the property is. Same thing with a landlord that maybe owns multiple properties and is a frequent visitor with the code department for violations. You own two or three apartments and you've got 15 code violations and they're always over your property. Let's put that out in the public, let everyone know, because there's no other real easy way for a potential renter to know if the apartment that they're looking at or the landlord is a good one or he's a genuine loser. But I'm not sure you can put that, whether it's, you know? I had a different term, but loser was the only one I'm going to get away with, you know?
People's.
I don't know if there's any legal restrictions saying, no, you can't do that or not, but it's an idea because once again, renters don't have any way to check, but landlords do. Thank you.
Okay, first one, the deer problem. Has the committee been revised or?
I, we have done research into the committee. The information that we have is that the deer committee members, their, their terms expired December of 2018. We actually did go back and research the, the resolutions that established them. There was no sunset clause on that committee, so the committee is still there. It's, it simply has a list of, of, I have, I guess you call them former members now because they expired December of 2018, so that's, that's where that part of it stands.
It's not uncommon for that committees to get, kind of sneak by us a little bit and we don't fill them. And I guess I, I take partial responsibility for that, you know, but I, we need to know about it. So as soon as a vacancy comes up, if you maybe find a process to notify us and the committee members and myself, so then, and then we can start a process to maybe advertise or, we, we need to fill them a lot quicker and like 2018 is like a year ago and.
And, and I, I spoke with, with Heidi there in the clerk's office and she's come up with the list now of vacancies that are at your request.
Right.
And gotten with hers. We've got that and then we'll, I think having some type of a thing that, that shows for all of us, you know, so that all know upstairs when they're, when they're expiring.
Because we need to keep the public and the community involved. It helps me make decisions when I see people getting involved and, and helping to troubleshoot where they live. It's, gives them a little more authority to solve their own problems with our help. So continue on. So what is the process with the deer?
So basically, in dealing, in dealing with the deer, I've spoken with the DEC, you know, the, the state department, whatever they're called, and, and they came up with the typical usual thing that I hear, but a couple of pieces of information that I had is they, they are watching to make sure that things like chronic wasting disease from other states aren't coming in. We haven't seen any evidence. There was a scare over in Leroy because it was a deer that was acting strangely and that's one of the things they did tell us is that if there are some deer that are acting strangely, is to let them know, so, I mean, I'll, I'll follow up again with them, with DEC and see where, see where further they've gone. I have found typically, we have to call them, they don't just.
Right. Well, in this case, I mean, we have a potential where.
Right.
A group of deer seem to be a little more aggressive than normally.
Be aggressive, more aggressive than normal.
Right. And they might just be comfortable with the situation, but I think in something like that, it's more than just bushes being eaten.
Right. And I, and obviously, I'm not the expert that's going to be able to tell you why they're acting the way they're acting, but DEC does have the people who have that training and expertise, so.
How did you?
Yeah. The one problem I have is this committee went on for several years discussing it and the DEC and it was really very limited things that could be done. I, I'm just wondering if it might be more effective to just call a DEC, have them come up, talk to the property owners directly and.
I don't know.
Because the committee meets and then we'll meet.
I think they already kind of did that, but, Mr. Canaly?
Mr. Nefiu and I spoke for quite a, quite a long time on the phone and I expressed his concerns to Marty to take the ball and run with it. We have dealt with this problem for so long now and before it was a matter of property damage and, and that was our, our main concern was property damage. And we thought, well, you know, we'll do what we can and we'll form this committee to study how we might be able to combat this problem. Nothing has happened up until this point and now we're in a situation like Mr. Nefiu explained that these deer are becoming somewhat violent. They're, they're, they're taking the, the population on at this point and that, I think from a, from a public safety standpoint, has to be addressed. I think we, we're beyond just studying the problem anymore. I think we have to have some kind of reaction to the problem now. So I, just reforming this committee isn't going to do anything. You've, you've mentioned it many times. We, we form committees and we study things for a long time and there's no action. It's time now to take some action because I see it in my neighborhood, I see it in my yard, in, in the park behind my house, there are literally herds of deer in, right in the city now, right at Centennial Park, we mentioned that, crossing Eloquent Avenue. I almost hit one the other night crossing Eloquent Avenue, standing right in the middle of the street staring me down as I'm watching with headlights on. The problem has become more severe now and so our reaction has to be fairly prompt and I'm not sure what that reaction is, but we have to, we have to take action now. So I think as a council, we need to look at it now. It's, it's beyond just forming committees.
Mr. Beely?
I have to agree with John. We're wasting time on committees and wasting money. There's only one solution that I feel and it's not going to be a positive one, but I think it should be control kill to eliminate them.
Well, and that's, we talked about that before and the problem was there, the laws prevent us from doing anything pretty much. They tell them to plant deer resistant food or, you know, plants instead so the deer won't eat it.
They should tell us what we can and cannot plant in our yard.
Well, I agree.
The solution is you gotta be eliminated.
I totally agree and maybe that's something we need to explore. We can't really debate with you out in the public, but.
No, I just.
Do you want, you know, here's a, here's a thing. When we get done, do you want to stand up and give a five-minute speech? I'll let you do that. Why don't you stand up and give your opinion? Go ahead.
My name's Jason Farley. I know, I live towards the town of Avon and they have the same problem and now they're doing a bait and shoot, which they have soul hunters that are in like the city.
There you go.
And they start doing that and you have to go through a, a course and be able to shoot to their par and then they have designated bait and shoot areas and there's, they have a person that sits with them, instructs them and they have a, tell them which deers to kill, how many to kill, and they have a quota they got to meet. And that, my buddy's done it for two years in Avon and it's wiped out the deer herd tremendously.
There, that's very good to know. So maybe, thank you very much.
Let's reach out for these committees.
Yeah, I mean, that, that came up before, but the people in the first ward were really not, there was several people that were against the actual killing of the deer. So that's, that put a. put a stop to that. But in this end of town, if your neighbors are into it, I mean... Yeah, go ahead. It's a little unorthodox, but I mean, this is a problem we'd like to solve, so...
Okay, thank you. The property behind me is 22 acres, I believe. It's landlocked.
Right.
The deer come in, and they're coming in from GCC side, down through, and that's where they hang out. There's a lot of acres, that's where they hang out. And if you're going to get a bait-and-shoot type of deal, well, you've got herds of them right over there by Genesee Community College, in those open fields. That's where they're coming from, and they're filtering down through. Once they get into that 22 acres, they stay there. Now, there is no pushing them out, believe me. And the thing of it is, I have to protect my family from going out there. I certainly want to do the right thing by the law. That's why I'm here. I don't want to be forced to do something that's not legal.
Right.
But it's getting to a bad point. Okay, so...
Yeah, I'm aware of the property there, and I want to think it has something to do with behind the old State Street armory and that whole woods that go up to Noon and Drive. It's a section there. The main problem is, we have BOSs and a school right there. So, it's not going to be, I don't think any other person besides a law enforcement officer can even possess a firearm on that property near that school within so many feet. So, it's going to be more, I don't think we're going to be able to do it with hunters. I think we're going to have to possibly, unfortunately, this happened in Amherst at one time, too, and I know the officers were tasked to doing it, and it was tiresome after a while, because it was a constant process. So, I'm all for it, but we should look into it at least and get some more information on it.
Mr. President, I think the first thing we should do is immediately issue a warning in the paper, possibly, you know, the Batavian, the news media, and the DEC helped craft it, warning people and advising them that deer are wild animals, stay away from them, don't approach them, they're not cute to go over and pet like a puppy. Now, I lived in Alaska for a period of time, and almost every morning, we had about a 2,400-pound bull moose looking over the fence in the backyard. People up there got along with wildlife. They just, they'd walk through town, they had herds of moose, and a moose is nothing to mess with. It's, you know, it can do a lot of damage. But they'd walk through, they have hiking trails right in town and non-motorized trails and all that. You certainly stop and give way to a moose with your car. But there's, in there, you can't shoot an animal in the cities. Bear would come into Fairbanks, they'd issue warnings when the bears were starting to come into town, because they'd kill people's dogs. In a lot of areas, they'd have to get a subsistence Inuit hunter to kill an animal. Like, if a polar bear came in on the north slope and killed someone, they still could not kill that polar bear. They'd have to get a subsistence hunter to do it, to comply with the law. But people have a very healthy respect for wildlife, and a deer is big game. It's a small, big game, but they're nothing to mess with, and if they turn and kick you from the backside, you're...
Yeah, you'd be kicked five times before you knew you were kicked once. So...
I think issuing a warning. I think a lot of people don't know how to live around wildlife and don't know what they're capable of.
I mean, how do you guys feel about the warning part? I mean, you think, I think that's reasonable. I mean, it doesn't hurt.
I think so, too. I wanted to ask, before, when we talked about this, because a lot of them, like Mr. Nephew said, near GCC, didn't we say that we were going to contact the town of Batavia and possibly work with them to see what can be done? Because, remember, a lot of them are coming in from the town and in there near GCC.
I agree. I think that was something the committee was going to be done, but then we lost track of it. I think they got discouraged, because they were talking to DEC, and they basically said there really wasn't much they could do. So, in this case, we should definitely, I think we're at that level. We need to explore the, and I'm pretty, and I'm pretty sure, I'm positive, all the meat goes to serve, to feed the hungry, and it goes to, you know, various food banks and various things. So, we're not just killing animals and throwing them in the dump. Everything's going to be used, and unfortunately, we're at that point, because most people aren't hunting in New York State anymore due to all the regulations and the laws with the firearms, and that people are, kind of, protesting, and a lot of people I know don't hunt anymore as, kind of, a rebellion on it. And that's now causing the population to grow exponentially, and we're now encroached in the city. So, if we could, are we, as we're in consensus, to direct the city manager to explore the final option here?
Absolutely.
Yeah, do whatever you have to do, and yeah.
Okay, thank you. We also had the grants, revolving loan. Anyone want to comment on that?
I would like some clarification as to that particular one that we're discussing there.
You mean, the score system?
Yeah, this one that Ms. Rosenbeck referred to here, with the score of 60.
Is there anyone that you can explain that? Rachel, do you, or Marty? Can someone explain that score system?
Well, we both sat in on the scoring system, and part of the scoring, I believe, had to do with whether or not it was a downtown business.
Right, and that's where the biggest hit, there was a big point picked.
That was the biggest hit on the scoring. As far as the quality of the project itself, those parts of the scoring scored well. It was, again, it was that component that had to do with, is it a downtown business?
Right. And if it had an apartment...
It had an apartment.
Yeah, those were the two. Otherwise, it would have got a high score, it got high scores, and I remember looking at it. And that was the two that, obviously, it's not a downtown business, and it doesn't have an apartment above it. So, those were the two biggest hits it took. The other one did have those items, and that's why they went high. So, and I do remember that came up, and we discussed it, and that was explained. So, council made a decision based on the information at hand, and there was nothing secretive about it, it was there. But the score was just a way to give us a reference to make a decision. It doesn't mean that we wouldn't automatically deny it. As far as I know, there's no requirement that it has to be above a certain score before we would approve it. And it was the first two grants that we had done. So, you know, no excuse again, but it is a learning process. So, that would be something that we should pay attention to in the future. If that's important to you, then if it doesn't meet a certain score for whatever reason, then that's something that's definitely a concern. We're not planning to do too many of these. It's just that we offered it out there, and those were the first two that came in, kind of, quickly. We don't have unlimited money, so we have to be very careful on how we give that out.
Well, I think it's just important that the public realize that we make these decisions based on the merit of the project, not the score itself.
Right.
That's, you look at the project, and you say, "What's best for the city of Batavia", that's the way we make the decision. It's not necessarily based on...
Right, and the score is helpful. It gives us an idea to point out various strengths and weaknesses.
It's one of the guidelines that you want to look at.
Right.
But there's also other things that we look at as well to make those decisions.
Right.
And we look at, as a council, we look at things on the merit as to how it will benefit the city of Batavia and the residents of the city of Batavia, not by just another score. So, that's important for the public to realize that.
And I can only speak for myself, but I took also into consideration that it's been a long-established business. It's one of the few type of businesses like that in the city. Services a lot of, a lot of local businesses rent from them to use different tools. Plumbers rent from them, gardening people rent various specialty tools that they wouldn't afford to buy on their own. So, I looked at that, I took all that into consideration as well, and I was happy that they were expanding their business, because that helps them serve more customers that need their help. So, they're supporting a lot of small business by their business. So, that's where I came from on it. But I do agree that it's probably something we should pay close attention to. It's tax money, it's our money that we want to make sure we spend properly, and it doesn't hurt to pay attention to it even more, so...
It's a business that's expanding. When a business expands, they expand for the purpose of increasing sales. When they increase sales, sales tax revenue moves up. There are two sources that a municipality relies on for income. One is sales tax, one is property tax, okay? If he's expanding his property, he's also expanding the assessment of that property at some point in time, and he's also immediately expanding the sales tax revenue that will come into that establishment, come into the county, and the city benefits from what comes into the county, obviously, in a big way. That's why we spend so much time on our sales tax agreement.
Right.
So, again, it's the ripple effect that the public needs to realize. This is a business move, not only for him, but it's also a business move for the city of Batavia.
Right. Anyone else? Okay, the landlord issue. I'm not so sure that landlords can do background checks on individuals, do they?
Yes.
I mean, but how do they? They don't use the police department. They have, must be a private company that does it. So, is it possible for them to do a check on the landlords the same way?
I suppose it depends on accessing, the tenant accessing similar areas of information or similar reporting sites. Yeah, I would imagine that would be the case. Personally, I'm not directly familiar with that, but if that information is out there, it should be accessible.
What about the second question of notifying the public? I mean, that doesn't sound like we're able to do that. I mean, are we?
Well, I think there's two layers of issues there. First is the mechanism to do that, and the staff to do that, and basically creating a directory. It's not something that presently exists in that fashion. And the second, I think, is a question of, you know, basically having a standing FOIL request for that information. And I think there are some privacy considerations associated with that that we'd have to think about long and hard before we were able to say that that's something we could do, so...
I would think an alternative to that, if you're going to rent an apartment, ask the landlord for some references and go talk to the people that formerly rented there. I mean, they want references from their tenants a lot of times. It wouldn't hurt if it's a good piece of property and the landlord's above board. Why would he be concerned about giving former tenants and say, "Here's a couple of my former tenants, go talk to them", and then that's how you could easily find out, right? Just a thought. Anyone, yeah, Ms. Briggs?
I just wanted to say that, as far as, we do have some landlords that don't maintain their properties and, people that rent, and Marty and Rachel, our manager and our assistant manager, together with the police, they've been, I know I've been working with them, because we have some of those problems in the 5th Ward. So, we are addressing those issues. I just want you to know that. We are addressing them.
Very good.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay. Unfinished business. I have one thing that I noticed. Have you noticed in your packet, there was, they talked about the former Brisbane mansion, which is now the police department?
Yes, yes.
Our historian did a very nice history lesson on the mansion and how it became to be to the point we're at now. I just would, I'm, council is aware, and I think we talked during various police building committee meetings, that we are seriously considering protecting that building. It is a historic site, I'm aware of, and we would make sure that before we would sell it, we would make sure it was going into proper hands. I mean, that's how I feel. I kind of assumed, I just wanted to make sure you guys are on the same page, no... So, we wouldn't just walk away from there and let it crumble to the ground. We would definitely try to make sure it gets into good hands and continues on.
Well, when I, if I can speak...
Go ahead.
When we first discussed a possible new building for the police department, that was one of our major discussions, is, okay, now what do we do with the old building? And if you remember back then, I even said I would not be in favor of a new facility unless we had plans for the old facility, and we all agreed on that.
Right, I knew it.
Back then, Jason was here, and we discussed how, even to put it up for sale, that building would have to, would have to be worked on to even make it a sale item.
Yeah, clean it up.
And we discussed, you know, the possible uses of that, what possible private enterprises might buy it and utilize it as a professional facility. So, I think we're all in agreement that something needs to be done with that building, that certainly, I read this, and it was a great history lesson for me as well, but certainly, nothing can possibly happen to that building.
Yeah, Dr. Moore agreed that he would present us with the disposition of the building before anything's done. He said he would do his study on it, come up with possible uses, possible purchasers, possible disposition. So, we'd be fully informed before we make any decisions.
Well, if I, if we go based on past history, pardon the pun here, but we would also, we have the BDC and GCEDC that would, could solicit for proper development, and we could basically look for proposals, just like we have in other properties, right? And let's see the best proposal, what they want to do with the building, and then we can work it out from there. So, we might not have to do too much to it if we get the right proposal and let someone, we work some kind of sale agreement, or whatever we would do at that point. I'm glad we're talking about this, because it means that we are very serious about building a police department, and they are in dire need of one, and we need to remind the police officers that we are working on getting you a new building, and it's one of our goals to really make that happen. So, at this point, I would love to have that problem of what to do with the old building.
Right.
So, anyone else on that? Okay, very good. New business. Resolution 111, 2019, Mr. McGinnis.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution transferring funds from assigned fund balance to various reserve funds.
Seconded by, Mr. Veely. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilperson McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Resolution 114, 2019, Ms. Pacino?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution authorizing changes to the City of Batavia Streetlight Account with National Grid Power Corporation.
Seconded by, Mr. Canale. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Resolution 115, 2019, Ms. Briggs?
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to authorize the City Council President to execute an easement agreement with Time Warner Cable Northeast LLC.
Seconded by, Mr. Veely. I think we were provided, the copy of the actual agreement was given to us as we walked in today, just so you know, if you wanted that to look at. Any other questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Briggs?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 116, 2019, Mr. Bayakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to amend the 2019-2020 Department of Public Works budget to reflect the receipt of $100,000 per the amended and restated County Genesee and City of Batavia Operation and Maintenance Agreement dated 13 December 2018.
Seconded by, Mr. McGinnis. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Resolution 117, 2019, Mr. Canale.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 190 entitled Zoning of the City of Batavia Municipal Code to amend I-1 and I-2 to include self-storage and to schedule a public hearing.
Seconded by, Ms. Briggs. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Resolution 118, 2019, Mr. McGinnis.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution authorizing the city council president to sign a lease agreement with Batavia Players Incorporated.
Seconded by Mr. Veely. Questions or concerns? Mr. Byakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I have some serious concerns over this lease. I expressed them at the last meeting. Uh, the city didn't do so well in a recent lawsuit involving a mall agreement, so now's the time to be prudent with any leases. Lawsuits cost the taxpayers thousands of dollars, and we should take off precautions to avoid them. At our last meeting, Mr. Van Ness stated that this lease was approved by the previous council and the previous manager, but this does not encumber this council. It's putting our name on it. I think we need to do it right because we're responsible. This is the, the city's first lease in the mall, so we need to be cautious. Uh, I'd like to see this lease clarify the following items by clearly defining them. Remodeling on page two, paragraph 4B, covers obstructions and antennas on the roof, but does not include projections inside or outside of the leased premises. Uh, for example, an air conditioner in a window, a fan sticking out, anything sticking through, uh, the building area. Uh, common use area fee, it's still, there's no mention of it. It's commonly called the mall maintenance fees. If the city's waiving that, it should be clearly stated. The city waives the fee, and the city's responsible for it. Utilities, there is no mention of utilities. I did go and procure some commercial leases. I have one right here, it's very similar type of property, uh, covers every single item on the property. A timeframe to remove the MRI, once the lease is signed. If it's going to be 30 days, 40 days, it could be complicated to remove it, then it should be clearly stated, and then the tenant shouldn't have to pay rent on their property until the equipment is removed. Uh, it's on page 416. Use of property, common areas and parking, page 118, clearly states no elimination, no limitations, uh, on any of this. Well, of course, there's limitations. You can't be out in the mall at 3:00 in the morning when the building's closed, you can't leave your car in the parking lot all night, or two cars or three cars. Uh, we need to include, uh, building preventative maintenance, cleaning, trash accumulation. If someone's not using an office, they may just say, well, I'll just pile up my trash in there for now. Include that the tenant's responsible for his own dumpster. The tenant may just assume that the city's taking care of the trash. Will the city have input over the types of events? You know, I think the Batavia Players is a, a great organization, and I think we need to look at their side of it too, but if some other organization's working with them, they may want to put an event on. It is city property. It may cause a lot of problems. It may be an event that the city may not want on their property. Uh, no alcohol on city property. It's not stated in there. I think there should be an attachment on the lease with the rules, regulations. I know at one time, the mall had operating rules and regulations. If you put an attachment on, then you wouldn't have to change the context of the lease. You can say, uh, the tenant agrees to the attachment, which may be amended from time to time. Let's see. Ice and snow from in front of entrances. There's no mention of ice and snow in, in front of the entrances, and, uh, who's responsible for cleaning it? You know, s- some places provide that service, they shovel right up to your front door. The city may not be able to do that seven days a week. So, you know, in my opinion, a good lease makes for a good business, and in the interest of fairness in both parties, uh, I move to amend the motion by returning the lease to the city attorney to, uh, resolve some of the aforementioned issues I've brought up.
Council President, if I may. This lease is a standard commercial lease. It's been used in the past for mall property with respect to that. It was reviewed and approved by Dent and Dent's council. It's been reviewed and approved by council for Batavia Players as well as the Department of State. So, respectfully, it's standard lease. In terms of the prior approval by council, that was made on February 12, 2018. Many of these same questions were asked and answered at that point in time. They were addressed, and council voted, at that point, seven to one in favor of the lease. The reason that this is brought back before you in discussions with the council, or the city manager, excuse me, is there were a few changes to the form of the lease with respect to the term to provide an additional extension period for Batavia Players, which would be satisfactory and necessary for the Department of State to show the period of control of that property. Ultimately, this has already been reviewed. We felt it was, it was good practice to bring this back in front of you, so I would respectfully suggest that the council vote on this. If any particular council people want to vote against it, that's certainly...
I honestly expect that this to be a suggestion for the state to make at this point.
Okay, but, point of order, we, he moved to make an amendment. So, how is that handled at this point?
It was interrupted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, you know, I mean, if we don't get a second, then we move on. If we get a second, then we'll discuss it.
Okay. So, that's, is that proper? So, the, the motion on the floor is a movement, a move to, um, send the lease back for re- approval by the city attorney and the city manager, at which point, you've heard this city manager, um, make a comment, technically, we should have seconded before we discussed it, because we don't discuss it until we second it. So, you've heard that anyway, it kind of got by me, and I apologize for that, but at this point, is there a second for that?
Can I say one thing?
What?
You have to understand what a triple net lease is. I don't think anyone understands what it is. They're responsible for most of everything that Bob's asking for.
Yes.
So, do you want to...
So, I agree with, I'm, I'm agreeing with you.
Okay, but the question is, do you want a second to motion?
No, no, no.
So, th- there is no second. So, we're back to the original discussion on the resolution, correct?